Oh, it doesn't do the big like thing.
Kim, there's a seat here.
We have a quorum with folks at in the room and online.
Yeah, so in the room we have Ellie Beckett and Steve Shepherd on the planning commission. And then we do have a quorum. I know that Megan won't be here. Mickey might zoom in.
And Shayla might be stuck doing something. I haven't heard that. I just know this time of year she might be.
So. Yeah. All right, let's jump in. Call to order and any public comments today?
I think most folks here are for an item later on the agenda.
Okay, then let's do the minutes. I've been catching up on a lot of minutes because of my absences, so thank you for those.
Jill, I didn't make any comments in the minutes, but.
You can just toss that paper on the floor.
My memory isn't great, but I thought that at the last meeting, which was April 16th, that because the link wasn't right for the previous minutes, that we didn't vote on the previous minutes and in fact still haven't reviewed them. Is that right?
That's my record. Yeah, I remember that as well.
Yeah, so this these minutes say that we did vote on the prior minute, so I think we need to change that.
All right, Emily, can do we want to go back and do those last minutes as well and sort that out?
Um, yeah, we can. So fix the April 2nd meeting minutes.
Yeah, we have not reviewed April 2nd yet because on April 16th, the April, the link was to the March something minutes.
Yeah, that is true, Chapin. We've got to approve for two different minutes today.
All right, so.
Okay, so these are the what I'm strongly clearing now is the April 2nd minutes.
It doesn't matter to me which order we want to go in. It's already up. Do we have a motion from anyone?
I'm going to accept the minutes of April 2nd. As presented.
Mickey, is that a second?
No.
Okay.
Oh, she's here too.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm gonna abstain just because I was absent.
Okay, so that's six in favor, one abstention with the alternate voting for a total of seven. All right, back over to.
I just want, there's some other folks who joined online. Did anyone have a public comment or are you for a later agenda item?
Back over to the April 16th.
So where it says minutes, April 2nd, can you just change that to say the minutes, April 2nd were not linked? And so we took no vote on minutes?
Thank you, Chapin.
Yeah.
These were really helpful too for having not been there to see what we're. Turning in.
I'll move. We accept these minutes as amended if others agree.
Yeah, I'll second that. They were really good.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I'm also gonna abstain on these. All set with that?
Yeah, all set on the two minutes.
Okay, let's move to the petition.
So Jill, I wanted to ask if it's okay. So if folks were able to read this, it was it was addressed to us as the planning commission. And I would ask if if we're able to take a couple of minutes to just have Matt very briefly review what it is that we are able to do through our in our roles as planning commission members versus what we are not able to do in these roles specifically. The reason I want to do that is I want to acknowledge the work and intention and importance and urgency of this issue and this topic. And I also want us to make sure we are focused on as a planning commission, what it is that is in our power in this role to affect in terms of change on this topic. So Matt, I don't know if you can talk a little bit about sort of zoning versus ordinance? And if there are any similar pieces being done in other sort of adjoining towns and what those could look like?
Sure. So just in case anybody pops into this as a YouTube video, I'll just start by saying the petition that we're discussing is in general, one, asking the planning commission to forward a local clean heat standard through the regulatory adoption process to the select board that would require new residential and possibly commercial development to derive the energy for its heat and hot water from renewable sources. And the petition goes into some detail about that, also excluding so-called renewable gas, et cetera. So some things to consider, there are two neighboring communities Burlington and South Burlington that do in some way or another regulate the heating energy source of new development of one type or another. Both of them almost entirely do it through an ordinance related to their building codes, which they also administer. So there's there's a tiny bit of a reference to a clean heat standard for single-family homes in South Burlington that lives in or piggybacks on their zoning, but almost all of it is is in an ordinance. And that seems to be the way most communities do it. Having a local clean heat standard generally requires an element of building code and a qualified person on the staff of the municipality to enforce that code through auditing and inspection. And as many of you know and may have heard, Bemoan in Williston, that's not a structure we have here yet. We don't have a building or building code or ordinance or building inspection regime. So-called public buildings, which is anything more than a single-family home or any commercial building, are handled by the state of Vermont through the Fire Marshal's Office and the State Department of Labor and Industry. And energy is part of that, but the requirement should nowhere near as stringent as requiring a particular heat source. So that's the landscape around us. There's also some research Melinda, who can't be here tonight, did that leads us to believe that if you do have a local standard related to heating energy source, you must have a qualified person on your staff who can regulate that, someone who's had training and has knowledge in how buildings are constructed and how their mechanical systems work. So just to give a little context, you know, Williston by population right now is about half the size of South Burlington, about a quarter the size of Burlington. We're on the edge geographically and in many other ways with the things that we're doing. And to to take up a local clean heat standard would be, you know, an advancement beyond what the town has done so far. So to the first part of what you asked for Shayla, unless you want to interrupt me, please do. I just saw your mic come off.
I do want, I want to interrupt you very briefly because I'm realizing that I can't see everybody in the room and I can see Reed Carr and Ryan Forrest here online. And I just wanted to take a minute to just let folks know, I do think and and commission members and Emily, Matt, you can guide me here, but I do want to make sure we leave some time for those who came, if you came for this topic, to have a comment on this topic. So I don't, we are gonna go back and forth a little bit here, but I I want to make sure folks know that I want to make space for that as well. I apologize, I can't see you all in the room.
Great, thanks. So the second part of what I want to say is a little quicker, which is just what's the statutory role of a planning commission? And the two main jobs that state law gives planning commissions are the drafting of the municipal plan or the comprehensive plan in Williston, we call it Williston 2050, and it's the town plan we're working on right now, which is ultimately forwarded to the select board for consideration and adoption. And then the operation of that town plan by, you know, certain things like reviewing the capital budget each year to make sure it's in accordance with that plan, et cetera. And the other major job that state law gives planning commissions is the drafting and consideration through public hearing and forwarding onto the select board of zoning bylaws. And zoning bylaws are a type of rule or type of law that municipalities in Vermont are allowed to have for certain purposes and to do certain things. And generally they're about public health, safety and welfare. And there are some limits on, you know, what we can regulate through zoning and how and things like that, that some of you who have been here for bylaw adoption might have heard heard us discuss before. Towns also often regulate things locally where they can via ordinance and building code, property maintenance law, like you've got to cut your grass a certain height, litter control, parking, local speed limits and other things like that are ordinances. And they do not typically originate with the planning commission. They typically originate via a request to the select board or or the select board themselves taking something up or maybe taking something up because the comprehensive plan they adopted told them to. So I lay that out simply to note that one of the petition's requests is that the planning commission move forward on a clean heat standard for new buildings, new residential buildings particularly, before the adoption of the town plan that, you know, you've all been working on for some time. And I think within that, there's an acknowledgement that the town plan is going to take some time to get done. It doesn't actually need to be adopted until the end of next summer in 2025, and then the planning commission would go to work on those things. And that feels like an awfully long time when something more rapid might happen. But what I would just sort of caution is that in our research to adopt a clean heat standard for new buildings entirely out of the zoning authority would be something new that I don't think anybody's ever done before, and I'm not sure if it's entirely supportable or or enforceable that way. So.
And I just want to clarify that, what you're saying. Doing a clean heat standard entirely through zoning is not something people have done before. Can I ask another clarifying question? In the town plan amendment, when I first started, we created the energy committee. I'm pretty sure they're often recommend things to us. Do they also have authority to recommend things to the select board?
Unlimited powers of advisement to anybody they'd like to give that advice to, absolutely. The energy committee is not understood as just a mere subcommittee of the planning commission. It's a town committee. It can go where it needs to go and do what it needs to do, absolutely.
Okay, that was an important point that I just did not know from my own background. And so before we keep going, do other planning commissioners have the sort of technical, how how have other places done it? What what is our authority? That kind of that type of question for staff? Go ahead, Chapin.
And I wouldn't say it's more of a question, but a comment, which is that we have done all we can, or at least we've enhanced what we've done at the recommendation of the energy committee and in accordance with our energy plan, which is part of our existing town plan to incentivize alternative heat sources. We've increased the how somebody can score better and get faster approval for more units. We are in this, my comment is that in the situation we're in right now is that there are about 500 housing units between Glazier, Summerfield and the Annex that are already past the point where that incentive is the a driving factor. And so we may have to, if we want to hasten adoption of clean energy for heating, we have to do it from the other end, which is more enforcement, which is where why it comes into ordinances. And I realize there's issues with that, but to me, it's not about who originates the request. It's that because we want to affect units that are already past the place where we can do it through our zoning bylaws that have incentives, it appears we have to do it by ordinance. And to me, it's what we would do would be recommend something if we do something. Whereas we can't do it, but we can recommend it be done. Anyway, that's my thought. And the the urgency for me isn't whether it happens this year or next year. The urgency is the fact that those hundreds of homes will find it hard to make a transition to clean heat for 100 years or more because many of them are being built in ways like in townhouses and so forth, where you can't put the external infrastructure easily as a retrofit. So I just, I view this as being in in terms of whether the select board would do this as part of the town plan, they adopted the energy plan, which says we should move towards non-fossil fuel heat sources. So to me, that we already have a town plan that says we should be doing this. The question is, can we take more action than we have? Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other commissioners with questions or comments? Go ahead, Mickey.
Um. Shall we look at different way to to see either from the state or town willing to incentivize by providing, I don't know, some incentive if you convert into this kind of so-called more preferable, sustainable energy source? So have them out with the conversion from 100 years old system to newer type that are more efficient, more environmentally friendly or that is that is that what we will consider? Either at the state level, at the town level, I don't know. I'm sure we can afford it by ourselves. Those are type of things.
Transition, yeah, programs that help help households transition sources.
Instead of enforcing it, it's more carrot.
Carrot.
Yeah. That will be my input if there's such things are serious.
Promoting the carrots.
Yeah.
How is the the one that's happening in South Burlington? How has that gotten going? Was that developer-led or was that? I just read about it in the newspaper like here and there and it's, do you know how that kind of got off the ground?
Um, there's, there's a very active energy committee in South Burlington, a fairly climate-conscious planning commission and city council as well. I couldn't tell you, Joe, exactly how their ordinance wended its way all the way in front of council, but it had its champions on council to start for sure. And then in terms of the performance of that one, it's really, really new. And frankly, there's also a lot of outs in it about if something is essentially financially infeasible to do, you don't have to do it. So Melinda did kind of a deep dive on that and she said, well, it's just, it's really new and we're not quite sure yet. Parts of it didn't phase in until at least a year after adoption, which was about a year ago. So we'll we'll know more soon.
So it sounds like if the direction is in ordinance, it's something that the select board, I guess, even if we make it a bylaw, goes to the select board, but the planning commission is the one who writes the bylaw because it's about planning. But if it is in ordinance, the select board is the one that kind of shepherds. Like, am I seeing the two paths correct? Like, either it goes zoning bylaw that we sent, like planning commission does zoning bylaw that we sent to the select board or ordinance is kind of like energy committee or us could go present it to the select board? Like, what are the options? To the select board? Yeah, like. If I had that path and then the other path, we'd like write it into the town plan. That would be a year out.
So I guess, Hana, I think to your, yeah, for your, to your question, my next question is, has this letter gone in front of the energy committee? Have they made a recommendation?
Energy committee is not, but Kevin Thorly, remember Sam Wilson also on the energy committee. The energy committee has not reviewed this letter yet. I think the recommendation originally, I forget where it came from. I don't want to say anyone's name incorrectly, was to have it to the planning commission. Everything the energy committee has done so far has been on the carrot side of the equation, right? So the bylaw amendments for growth management points, et cetera, even in our work that we're doing it by now, updating the town plan, it's very much carrot-focused, right? Where there's a lot of shoulds in the plan, there isn't any recommendation for a direct ordinance yet. I can't speak on behalf of the energy committee now, obviously, but I think we would certainly take up the letter and, you know, consider it as well.
As a follow-up to something you said, Matt, you said that there were in South Burlington, there were kind of champions for it to begin with on the city council. Do we have a sense of what the select board? Like, what the select board sentiment on something like this would be? Like, are we in a similar position in South Burlington or?
I I don't have a sense of where the select board would be on something like this. The one, the one sense I have is that these these sorts of things are often pretty controversial. They were controversial in South Burlington when they were brought forward. And that it would be a good idea to try to get a sense of, you know, whether there's enough interest on the select board to move forward with preparing something. And, you know, I I bring bylaws, zoning bylaw amendments to the select board that I know are going to be controversial or might be difficult for them to find consensus around. And what we try to do is go in early and and inform them that we're we're working on a draft of something that has some things in it that they might have some pretty significant discussion about and and, you know, try to read the room, as it were. Is this likely to be successful in its current form? Or, you know, is this board going to want something different? So I I'd recommend, you know, a just a sort of a concept test in front of the select board on one of their agendas coming up as well, just to see how they feel about this stuff. Is this something they would like to to take on? And, you know, I think part of it, they, we are all very budget and staffing conscious here. And if if it really involves the creation of some kind of new staffing position in the form of a building inspector, that just adds a whole other dimension to that conversation. If if somebody needs to be qualified to administer this and be on town staff. So I know from, I know from other conversations with the select board that have been going on and the fact that our town budget, you know, failed its first vote this year, and one of the things was to remove a new a new human resources position in in the attempt to come up with a lighter budget for next year, that budget consciousness is going to play a role in this as well.
So I want to do two things. I want to make sure we give folks who came an opportunity to speak because you are here and I want to hear from you. And then and then also make sure that we kind of come up with, Hana, to your, I think your point, like, you know, some sort of next step. Well, let's just start. And I will look to, Ellie, if you are in the room, if you can help us facilitate the comments there, that would be great.
Marcy?
Yeah, thank you. So I have a question and a comment. And my question is, I've heard somewhere that in ordinance, I think I got this right, an ordinance needs to be verified by, you know, like some kind of inspector, building inspector staff. And a bylaw, there's, 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 someone could be sued if they don't do it right. If they don't abide by the recommendation, but it's not, it doesn't have to be. You know, so there's a threat there, but it's, it's not, it doesn't need to have a staff verification. Is that right?
Um, I can answer that. Zoning bylaw enforcement happens through a defined process that is different from ordinance enforcement. And effectively, once there's a zoning violation attached to a piece of property in our bylaw, there are no more permits available for that property. If the owner of that property wants to do anything else with it, there's also a verification that we won't sign off on called a certificate of zoning compliance, which in Vermont, because of case law, can prevent that property from being refinanced or sold to anybody else who's using financing to buy it. We can also take someone to court for a zoning violation. And we do that sometimes as well. That's, that's possible. Ordinances are enforced like any other law you can think of. In other words, you can, you can be ticketed, you can be fined, you can be taken to court, you can be, you know, in the criminal justice system ultimately for violating an ordinance. I I wouldn't worry too much about the difference between how they're enforced because that zoning enforcement authority is actually quite strong. But the difference would be a building inspector who says this building doesn't meet our code, you may not occupy it. If the owner then goes and occupies that building the next day, you know, you write them a ticket for for $200 or $500 or whatever it is, and you just keep doing that every single day. And eventually you're in, you're in court very quickly. So there's a, there's a more of a sort of a police style enforcement that comes out of ordinances. In zoning, I would write you a letter that said, hey, you occupied that building without a certificate. You shouldn't have done that. You have seven days to correct that violation. Please let me know when you fixed it. And then, oh, it's been seven days and you didn't fix it, you know, please stop or I shall say stop once again, sort of enforcement. So it's, it's, it's a little bit of a lighter weight enforcement under zoning. It works eventually, but it is slow.
And the timing too, because a bylaw then, you know, a project that's vested in zoning bylaws has that vesting. So if you say, if, if, you know, the annex was all pink buildings and the bylaw says now no more pink buildings, well, they're vested in that approval for what they have, whereas ordinances aren't tied to that land vesting the same way as zoning is.
I guess from, you know, the, the critical piece is that for bylaws, it doesn't seem like you need a staff position.
Yeah, if you want to enforce your zoning bylaws, you you appoint a zoning administrator in Williston, that's a staff person in a, in a small town. It might be just, you know, like the dog catcher or the fence viewer or something like that.
It can be someone who's already on staff.
Yeah.
Doesn't need a new position.
Yeah, the main thing, not, not to downplay it, but there are, there are no requirements for a zoning administrator to have any particular qualifications or training. They need to be able to pick up the zoning bylaw and read it and apply it. And, and, you know, most places like Williston, South Burlington and Burlington accepted, most zoning bylaws in Vermont are fairly simple. You know, they have so many feet setback to the side yard property line and buildings can only be so tall and things like that, that are fairly simple to enforce. I mean, you could, you could stick me in front of a heat pump in some. Um, I mean, you could, you could stick me in front of a heat pump in some basement of some building. And I couldn't tell you if it was producing sixty, seventy or ninety percent of that building's heat demand. And you could probably fool me and, you know, um, without, without knowing what to look for. That's a much more technical assessment. Same thing as I couldn't walk into a building and tell you if it met fire code or not. You know, um, or, or if the structural members were the right size. Those are, those are building inspector things and um. They require much more specialized training to enforce. Just to clarify, Matt, the, the bylaw doesn't require a staff person. But also isn't applicable to the, any of the properties we're talking about, because they are. Approved under previous. That's it. So, um, yeah, the, let's say somebody had a large residential project in Williston. That was approved and that they had planned under, you know, certain assumptions of what they were going to build. Um, and you know, that subdivision has an approval, the lots, the arrangement of everything has an approval. Maybe even some of the building design has uh, approval, but they're going to come in and pull individual permits for each unit in the project. There might be. Some element of building that unit that's not understood as having been vested under that original approval. But, um, there would be a very strong argument for an applicant to say, hey, I, you know, I designed this project. To meet this zoning bylaw, which included these things. And now you've adopted something new. After I got my approval that I didn't, you know, that I didn't factor in.
It would go to court.
It, it would probably go to court. And you know, Williston. Went to court against an argument like that in the nineties about the Tap Corners uh, park area where Walmart and Home Depot is. Um, the owner of all of those large commercial lots made the argument that um, he plotted the subdivision. For big box development, the town's development standard had changed to not allow further big box development. And he argued that he had a vested right to continue to build big boxes. Because that's what he had created the subdivision for. The court ultimately didn't agree with that. So there are limits to this theory. Um, but also the case resolved with a settlement before it was completely uh, fought out. Uh, which is why there can, under, under law, and I think the agreement has expired since now, but there could have been one more big box next to PetSmart. Under the old standards, that was the, the compromise at some point, but we're going way back. So, but people do make those arguments of, hey, I did something under the rules. And then you went and changed them and it's materially affecting me and I shouldn't, I shouldn't be subject to it. And you know, to Emily's example about pink houses and yellow houses, if it's that specific and you say. Pink houses are allowed today and here's your permit. Um, that says you can build pink houses and tomorrow we change the law. We, we can't make you go back and, and paint your house yellow. Or pink or wherever we're going.
Are there other comments in the room?
Well, I just, I just had a, a question in the comment. And that was my question. So my comment would, um, so now, I mean, now I'm like totally confused. Um, of, you know, the. For the, in the weeds kind of, of how, how to proceed with something like this. But um, but in general, like stepping back from the particulars and concerning um. My, my sense of how the select board would view something like this or how to proceed. Well, my two cents about it is that the select board, I think, looks to the community. To see what the community, what the sense is of what the community wants, especially if it's something. Different and new, a new direction. And um, and I think that we in sustainable Williston feel. You know, let's contact as many people as we know who care about this and bring them. So contacting the select board ahead of time, you know, that, that wouldn't. You know, factor in. You, you know.
Give any opportunity to raise grassroots support.
Exactly, yeah, right.
So I have a question. Is there any situation where you can have accurate inspection without tying new stack?
Yeah, I mean, you could, you could require self-certification by the applicant and you'll, you'll, you'll get what you get. Um, that's kind of the way the RBS and CBS systems work today in terms of meeting state standards.
What is RBS?
Sorry, uh, residential building energy statement and commercial building energy statement. So in Vermont, if you're building a new home. Or a new commercial building, you're required under state law to file an energy statement um, and record it with the town clerk. And I am required as the zoning administrator to not issue a certificate of occupancy for one of those new things. Unless you can show me that you've done that. However, I have no authority to refuse that. Based on what you've written on the certificate. If you draw a smiley face on it with a crayon and you record it with the clerk. You have met the requirement that, that you've shown me that you recorded that piece of paper. And I, I'm going to give you a certificate of occupancy.
Okay, so I, I understand that doesn't work well.
Well, it might not. It most, there's an honor system there and I, and I don't want to besmirch folks. I think most, especially large builders, you know, you get away with that once. Someone who's building hundreds of homes is, is going to do it right, because if they don't, they're going to get caught eventually and, and they will have to answer for that. But self-certification has its challenges. I'm just, I'm, I'm going to say that.
Is there something other than self-certification and town staff, like an independent contractor that doesn't work for the builder?
The, the town could contract for those services and the town could charge more for permits to cover the cost of that. That's, you know. That's a, that's a way we could do things. Um.
Or may, maybe there could be, uh, I mean, I think where there's a will, there's a way. I mean, I think.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, you know, Burlington and South Burlington are proof of that. There are, there are ways to do, I think, generally what this petition asks to do. They're, they're existing out in the field.
Do they have building inspectors?
Yes.
Both towns?
Yes, and they administer those.
That's the difference.
Yeah. So they, they're able to fold a standard like this into an already existing regime. That is much more, you know, technical than what Williston currently operates.
Go ahead, Reed.
Yeah, I'll write it out for you.
Oh, I think I know Kim.
Go ahead, Reed.
Hi there, uh, Reed Carr, um, Sustainable Williston. Um, I also serve on the Conservation Commission. Uh, my comments are a couple of things. One is that uh, I would encourage the. Uh, planning commission and or the energy committee, if you decide to seek their input. To uh, mostly focus on whether uh, the letter aligns in your view with the town plan, the current town plan. Uh, if you believe it does align with the current town plan, uh, which we do, uh, in terms of. Uh, setting a goal of reducing the carbon emissions from residential uh, housing. Uh, and or commercial uh, buildings. Um, then I believe it's uh, worth having a conversation with the select board. Um, and whether it ends up um, being written as a, a bylaw or an ordinance and whether it ends up getting enforced. Uh, through an honor system or a staff member or contracted services. I think that's a, a good thing to be worked out. If the select board agrees that it is um, something that we should be doing. Uh, but I would be cautious about uh, ruling out, um, having a conversation about something. Uh, based on concerns about how is it going to be enforced? I think that's something that can be uh, figured out as it moves along. And uh, as we were talking about that, it reminded me that uh, the Conservation Commission um, requires habitat disturbance assessments. Um, in many cases for uh, new development. Uh, in order to assess something that we as uh, staff and volunteers don't have the expertise to assess. So um, a qualified biologist prepares an assessment that determines. How the, the proposed development is going to impact um, wildlife uh, on that parcel. And we actually changed, within uh, last few months, we've changed to a new model where the town has a, a bench of. Um, trusted uh, providers, um, while that biologist that we can go to. Uh, and we uh, collect a fee from the applicant and use that money to hire those expertise. So uh, there is some precedent for that sort of model already. We're just getting started using it. Uh, but we, we did it to uh, ensure that the wildlife biologist was uh, completely neutral. Uh, the town doesn't have a, a preference on whether the development moves forward or not, only that it complies with the town's uh, bylaws. And uh, so the habitat disturbance assessment helps us with that. Uh, so I'm interested in um, in that. And my last comment is just that uh, I, I think it would be good to get uh, input from the energy committee. And uh, whether the planning commission or the energy committee or both would like to recommend to the select board to consider. Um, it, it, what sounds uh, like the most likely path forward would be something like an ordinance. Um, I think it would be great if uh, either or both would like to recommend it. And we're happy to bring this uh, letter as well to the energy committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Reed.
Thank you, Reed.
Are there other comments in the room?
There's one more.
Yeah, uh, this is Kevin Thorly again. Uh, just real quick. Marcy, will you send this to Melinda on the energy committee and we'll take it up?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Okay, um. I'm kind of left with, like this big brush mark in my head as we do the town plan. And we're talking about existing subdivisions now, right? Which is, I think, more challenging because they're already um, approved through the existing zoning process. But I kind of have to wonder, like, what's the path forward for enforcement at all? As it, is there a path forward for enforcement for new subdivisions that have not gone through everything yet? Because everything that we've got so far is a carrot. And we're calling out these subdivisions as special because they've already been approved. But all the language we're putting into the plans and the energy committee. I'm wondering what the path is to actually make that work, even for future developments. And it's not clear to me that even in the future, we have a plan to actually say, you know, for a development that we're going to build in twenty twenty eight, for instance, or twenty thirty. That it has no gas furnaces, right? I'm not seeing that unless it's just the zoning. Piece, but even that, I feel like the language around those hats off. So. Maybe that's a discussion, Matt, I don't know if you want to come to the energy committee and talk about it, but like, I'd like to understand. Even in the best perfect case, like we tee this up with like the, the twenty thirty development. How do we achieve what we want to long term, given what we've just talked about?
So Kevin, can I just interject here very quickly? Um. The, one of the things that I don't know, and I should have read into it before tonight. Um, was all the input that we received from town members into the town plan. Um, staff did like this incredibly beautiful, easy to read report on, um, thank you, Jill. On all that input. Um, and I, it has um, pieces in there about environment and energy. And um, I would, I would personally love it if the energy committee would take this, this letter up. Um, but then I would also encourage the energy committee to um, look at those sections in that report. Um, to sort of not, it doesn't answer your question about like, how would we do enforcement? But it, it does, I think, address this issue of, have we heard? Obviously, Sustainable Williston is a large group and, and I want to acknowledge that. So this is not like we're hearing from one human being. We're hearing from people living in Williston that this is important through this letter. Um, and we're not limited to what we collected in the town plan process. That said, I'm also curious what's in there about this. Um, and sort of what support that would have. To your point, in terms of the level of enforcement. And the carrot versus stick approach, whether or not we think we've got kind of the ground swell energy. Human energy, not the other kind, um, to, to go at this in a different, more proactive manner. Um. I just tipped my hand a little bit, that what I want to happen next. So, and I didn't mean to do that. Um. But is there other comments in the room?
Um, Shayla, I, I just did want to very briefly. Say to Kevin's point about, you know, how do you deal with it in future projects? You know, we um, we were dealing earlier in the year. With a, a bylaw incentive in that growth management system. Uh, high, the highest level of energy efficiency score involved things like onsite production of a certain amount of energy demand. For the new subdivision, things like that. Um, and, and again, you know, you could stick me in front of a solar panel. I probably couldn't tell you how much power it was making. But when you're, when you're dealing with um, a large building or site. Or an entire subdivision, there's a contract that's signed between the town and that developer called a development agreement. And it's how we do things like guarantee that all of the public and private infrastructure in that development is going to be installed. As it was uh, promised to the town throughout development review. And there are things like independent reviews by uh, contract engineers for the town. You know, when we're looking, was a road built correctly, uh, things that the applicant pays for. And so at, at scale beyond, you know, this one house or that one house. There are ways to address things in those development agreements that are, are not necessarily all the way articulated uh, in the bylaws. So, you know, I, I, I think to Kevin's point with larger scale development especially, there's a, there's a way to do that. And there are ways to structure an ordinance or other set of requirements that might, that might point toward that. Those are, those are all things um, for Williston to sort of figure out is, if, if it decides to go forward with this. Is what's the right way for a town of our size and capacity to um, do something like this?
And I think that would be another place to, um, and I think maybe this way you're getting at Kevin, which is. Um, the letter is focused on these projects that have already been approved. Um, that said. The importance of doing this long term, um. Exists still and, and where, where are we pushing that? And then also, how do we consider that? And, and I mean, one thing that I've thought about is how you phase something like this in at a local level. I mean, we'd sort of doing that with the um, inclusionary zoning, you know, do you start with only big projects? You know, do you start in a way that is a little bit, um, not exactly where you want to end up, but maybe sort of stepwise? Um, okay, so just looking at our agenda. Unless I, I, again, I want to just check one more time if there's any other public comment or planning commissioner questions. And then I want to kind of lay out a couple of different options that I think we have as next steps. Go ahead, Shayben.
Sorry, I just wanted to point out that the Glazer is, um, they sidestepped the growth management process. But they're not at a place where there's any um, uh, any agreement that's specific enough to be something that they're vested in. As far as heating source. So we have a wide range. And so I think there'll be a different answer for different projects on the question you just asked.
Thank you. Understood. Okay. Um, sorry, anyone else again? One last call.
Just, just to confirm what Chapman just said is that we could take a bylaw zoning approach and it would affect Glazer.
It could.
Could.
Um, so the Glazer project, you know, the specific plan approval was about a change in zoning. Um, there's been a pre-application session with the DRB, but there's no, there's nothing that's approved or denied at that stage. And what there hasn't been is what, what's called the discretionary permit review, which is where the DRB impro- imposes conditions of approval. So it goes, you know, pre-application, growth management if required, discretionary permit. And then what are called administrative permits are based, are pulled based on that. So there's a permit to build the road and put the landscaping in. And then there might be a permit for each dwelling unit going forward. And that's, that's where we get into that fuzzy question a little bit of. How far does the vesting from the overall development approval extend into what happens in the individual homes in the project?
But we need, we need to move. Quite fast.
Well, I mean, somebody could walk in here with that discretionary permit application tomorrow.
Right.
They're, they're in position to file that. And, and then that question about, well, how far can you go regulating an individual home? That's part of an already approved development with, you know, it would be a question for our land use attorney.
Uh, this also may not, this may not be relevant, but like if we're thinking about specific in progress developments. I believe for the Glazer one, when we did the specific plan, we wanted to give them flexibility with their bylaw. And so we did that thing where we. we did that thing where we allowed them, if there's a future iteration of the bylaw that gives more points in the energy category, we allow them to to use those because we anticipated like the energy, like essentially giving them more credit for energy efficient things. So that could be a tool if you're like, how do we like work through? Like, how do we give options to current ones to basically like, yes, it's more in the incentivizing track, which people have brought up, like the carrot doesn't always work, but sometimes it's what we're, it's what we're working with. So.
Yeah, that's a good point. So as the Glazer project was working through its review track, the Planning Commission was also working on amending Chapter 11 to add inclusionary zoning and update some of those scoring criteria. And that that old scoring criteria, they weren't going to get any points because it was based on a really high standard of build that is more of a custom home build than a production build level. And that very high solar production and the Planning Commission did want to give them that flexibility to use that one that we knew was about to be adopted or any future version. So they have flexibility for both the energy efficiency criteria and the sustainable transportation criteria, which is providing EV charging or car pool parking spaces within the development or at bus stops. If those criteria ever change, they could get points in that category as well.
Thank you. All right. So as I see it, this is not a, we're not voting on any like specific thing, but I think I I would like process with the commission members to think about what we're going to recommend. And then, of course, all of the humans who signed the Sustainable Williston letter can decide what to do with their recommendation. But I think the paths that could happen are ask the Energy Committee to take it up and provide a recommendation to us and or the select board, depending on who is more appropriate around what the next steps, short term, Kevin, to your point, and long term would be for the, looking at this clean heat standard. We could ask staff to take up. So that's option one. Option two is we could, we, the Planning Commission could ask staff to take up something of this nature in, within our zoning bylaw construct and bring that back to us. And option three is to, is to not do anything and to say, thank you for bringing the letter and not make a recommendation. The last thing I wanted to say is not one of the options, but I just forgot to say it earlier, which is the state of Vermont, and this doesn't impact the existing projects, but the state of Vermont, the legislature passed a requirement that that the Department of Public Service come back with, and sorry, the the Public Utility Commission design and come back with a clean heat standard to the legislature in 2025. The timeline is pretty far out. Again, in terms of this, and I'm, I'm not suggesting we should, we should wait, but there is a statewide effort in this area and in this space as well. And the legislature did attempt to pass something in this space and and area last year, and it failed to actually go through as a, as a change. It ended up as this study going back to DPS. So just I just want people to have that background that that is there. It's not something that if we wanted an immediate result, we could rely on, but there is work being done in that space in Vermont. Go ahead, Chieven. And if I miss an option, please tell me. I think those are our options.
No, I think, I I think you're right. And I will tip my hand completely, which is I feel as though the chance of us having an ordinance in time to make an impact on these projects is is difficult. But the fact that we are talking about it might be an incentive for a developer to design their project in a way that could support the mechanicals needed. And for instance, when there's row houses or apartment buildings to make sure there's space for the external air source heat pumps or for working with ground source heat pumps. So I think them knowing that we are looking at it is helpful to the overall direction. And if I were to make a, and I want to recognize too, the suggestion that Reed made that we how did he put it?
The bit about not worrying too much about the enforcement until we figure out what we're trying to do?
No, there was another part of what you said.
Or or the habitat disturbance assessments that we've
Those are more specific. It was about approaching it from the point of view of, and that's what us, is this
Doesn't align with the town plan.
With our town plan. Thank you. So I, if I made a motion, it would be to forward this letter to the Energy Committee and to ask our staff of the Planning Office to start some discussions with Eric and perhaps select board members to see if, and the immediate question for both of them would be, is this, are the things that are suggested in this petition to us consistent with our existing town plan, which includes the adopted enhanced energy plan? And if in fact they're consistent, then let's continue the conversations in whatever direction they can go. That would be my motion.
I have a second. Can I make one more comment?
Yes, please.
Oh, okay. I think if it's, if it's seen as like a kind of consumer protection, because, because the, you know, the clean heat standard is in the wind. I mean, it's cunning. And so, and so you know, however, the bylaw or the carrot or the, you know, however, it gets implemented or written, it's, it's to help people so they don't, you know, to so they don't have too much of a hardship converting when, when it becomes the law of the land. So, so if 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 this issue is seen as something that's protecting homeowners.
And I, I, I didn't put my hand down because I, that's such a good point, Marcy. To me, the cost of converting a fossil fuel furnace home to a not fossil fuel furnace home is large. And it's something that you typically don't do unless you're replacing the furnace. When it's connected houses like row houses, you may not even have somewhere you can put the external compressor. And so to me, we, if we think that in 50 years, these units are going to be trying to get off of fossil fuel, we are really doing a favor to future owners. You know, building them without having a fossil fuel furnace is the way to go.
Right. Any other Planning Commission members want to, want to say anything? Or do we want to just sort of do a raise of hands for the, my the options and the motions that that Chieven and I put forward?
Go ahead, Mickey.
I want to be a devil's advocate a little bit, all right? Whichever way we go, if we're going forward with this petition, who is paying the price? Is it a consumer, Anara? Or is it immediately a developer? Who is going to pay the bill?
Who, who say there's a bill that it's
It will be more cost, right?
No.
Or else it could happen automatically, no? You don't think so?
So I think, Mickey.
Yeah.
I think, Mickey, that's one of the, again, I already said what I kind of think, so I'm going to just begin. I think that's one of the reasons I want the Energy Committee to look at it too, is that the cost analysis in terms of like the town plan and our goals and one of our big goals is around affordability and affordable housing. And so, yes, there's a balance, but maybe this does not in, you know, I I would like an analysis around whether or not, and it's not to be a structured one, around whether or not this would have a big impact. Because that was one of the major barriers statewide for why it didn't pass.
Exactly my thing is, right? If it is at the state level, it cannot pass. And then we go and you literally make it work in our town. Are we going to be disservice to our people? I understand.
It's not pass. Excuse me, but the Affordable Heat Act was, it's a, it's a study that the legislature expects to look at in 2025 and vote on.
That's correct.
You're going to be better informed, but it's not something that has not passed. It is going to be something. The original one did.
Previous years.
Right. The actual, like, doing an affordable heats, or sorry. Doing a standard, like actually doing that, they, they tried to start with that. And it, and they did not have the votes to pass it. And that's why they went back to the, the study.
Maybe the better way to say is, it is in process now. It's a process that people hope to complete with better information.
Yeah, I'm inclined kind of like a, a sub, I like a, a sub sub point on what you proposed, Shayla, is like, I don't want to just be like, make this someone else's problem, but I do think that the Energy Committee could like, the Energy Committee could take this up and kind of shape in what you were saying about how we have all these developments who they've made it past, they've made it past the approval and zoning. And they don't have this renewable energy. And so now we need to come at it from the other side. And so I don't want to say, oh, everything past this is is not our problem. But I'm wondering if they're a good group to approach it from this side while we think about, hey, what's going on with our, our zoning bylaws that developers aren't choosing this? And like, basically give them, like, give them the letter, like, and have them take it up and put forth their energy towards it, while like having us kind of on this, this front end and them on the back end. And like, hopefully we meet in the middle. But I do have the questions about, you know, the cost benefit and affordability, because even if you're converting in in 50 years, like, that's a long, that's a long time from now. And so maybe it's really good to do now. Maybe it's preempt, maybe it's preemptive, maybe it's not. But I think the Energy Committee would like, it seems like it really falls really well in their wheelhouse. And like, we can think about what's in, like, what's in the zoning bylaws. And then if they come in and get it like approved and like, hopefully, whatever recommendation they make, we can see it ahead of time and like, maybe add our names to it and say, the Planning Commission supports this recommendation to the select board. So that way they're not solo in their endeavor or whatever. But like, it also seems like something, yeah. So those are my thoughts.
Right. Any other Planning Commission members? What do we want to? And should, I guess we should make it a formal motion. Chieven, you already did. So let's do that. All right. I'm going to entertain Chieven's motion to for this letter from Sustainable Williston to the Energy Committee. Ask them to review it, take it up, look at short and long term options and include in that as applicable, that that cost benefit issue that Hana brought up.
I think Mickey brought it up originally, so I won't take credit for it.
That Hana just mentioned. All those in favor? Okay. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Alrighty.
I'd like to clarify too, that Mickey, when I said that, who says there's a bill? The, the data say that to heat with gas and to heat with heat pumps is roughly the same cost. And that's what I meant for the homeowner, the, the exchange is considered financially equivalent. For the builder, it may be more expensive to install heat pumps at this point than to install a furnace, a gas furnace when there's gas available. And so I, I wanted to be certain that I was speaking for the consumer. And for the developer, there are incentives even for developers that we were talking about before, you know, we are incentivizing people to use cleaner heat sources. Various programs are and utilities are. Thanks.
All right. Jill, I sort of jumped in there. A lot of in the background, but can you back over to you?
Yeah, I didn't, um, did folks get to read the ARPA fund? I didn't see a link in the original agenda. So I'm not sure if the Planning Commission has all seen that letter or not.
Uh, they probably, probably haven't.
Jill. I did not, I did not see it, but I support it.
I, I waited for a thumbs up from you and Shayla to go ahead and publish it on the website.
It's a good letter. Matt wrote a good letter.
Jill and Shayla wrote a good letter. Just so everybody understands what we're talking about. Tonight.
Matt, Matt takes all the credit.
Tonight, the select board has taken back up their conversation about how to spend remaining American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA funds. And there's a whole lot of different things under consideration in that package. But one of them would be to spend some money on studying the feasibility of a tax incremented financing district in the Williston Growth Center. Tax increment finance districts are a tool that municipalities in Vermont have available that allows them to draw a boundary around an area that would have public investment generally in the forms of things like streets and parks and community centers and sometimes even housing or less exciting things like sewer pump stations. And a municipality can draw a boundary and say, we're going to make investments inside of this boundary. We're going to take out loans to make those investments. And if we have a tax increment finance district established, we're able to retain 70% of the education tax revenue inside of that boundary for a period of 20 years in order to pay off those loans. So it's a very powerful financial tool. It's a very, it's a tool that has very limited availability in Vermont. And and you have to pass what they call the but for test, which is basically to say, but for this investment in infrastructure, these things that we want to have happen wouldn't happen. Did I get that right, Alex?
You did.
And a study is to really figure out that but for, it's, it's a what if, it's a, what if we spent some money to build a new street in a particular place or a new park or a community center or a bike path connection or a sewer pump station or something like that? Would the development come to that and bring value inside of that district boundary such that retaining that education tax money would be enough to pay for the stuff that we went ahead and built? So the, the reason that I, is identified in this letter for doing that study is one, because tax current financing is a powerful tool. It's one that's worth considering. A feasibility study has value no matter what you do with it, because it tells you a lot about what the predicted growth pattern is in a part of your town. In other words, you've got a fork in the road. What happens if we continue down the path we're on, which is essentially developer driven infrastructure? And what happens if the town takes a little more control over that via investment in the tax increment finance program or or other ways of investing? And the, the poll quote and picture in the letter is from the Taff Coroner's Vision Plan, which identifies one of the concerns the community raised about Taff Coroner's, which is if you're more permissive about what can be built there, it's a big area. It's about 840 acres. You can get this kind of scattershot development and never really achieve that compact town center you're looking for. You could put 20 new buildings in Taff Coroner's and they could be scattered all over the place and still it would feel like this very dispersed place. But as few as four, one on each corner of a major intersection, can create the beginnings of a, of a town center as, as their desire has been expressed. So study would really dig a deep dive into that and say, would it work? If there's a particular targeted investment the town could make in a particular street or park, et cetera, would that bring the development to it that would create a nucleus for that town center? Is it worth pursuing that? And would you make enough money to pay off your loans at a very basic level? Because what happens in tax increment finance districts is if you spend the money and the development doesn't come and the grand list doesn't increase enough, the people of the municipality are on the hook to pay the bill. So you don't want to do that. You want to do a nice rigorous study to make sure that you're going to get enough grand list value to pay your bills. Not in the letter, but an example I'd like to have people file away. Since the adoption of the Form Based Code, there have been approvals for four buildings. Their total construction cost is about $20 million. If their value was $20 million upon completion and they were inside a tax increment finance district, If their value was $20 million upon completion and they were inside a tax increment finance district. Putting those $20 million onto the grand list gets your municipal taxes about $74,000 a year. So yay us, we've got a $14 million budget. We get to throw another $74,000 at it. 70% of the education tax rate, what you would get per year if you had the TIF district. Outside of that municipal, it's about $190,000 a year. So now you're taking in money that you can use to pay down to build a major piece of infrastructure. That's how it works. So this is a letter in support of the study. Information is good. We like information a lot because we're planners. And we think the select board should too. And we think it's worth spending some of this one time ARPA money to, to get a handle on this. You know, my personal story that I tell everybody is I, I live with the South Burlington TIF district a block away from my home. I, I can see the tops of the buildings from my house. I think it's been an incredible success. It's gotten my city a, a new city hall with a senior center, a new library. Not 100% paid for by TIP, but it has catalyzed those things. It will catalyze a pedestrian bridge over ID9 to connect us to the UVM campus. It has brought the Champlain Housing Trust into the area in a big way with a couple of buildings. And really created a city center and a main street for a, a community that didn't have one. You know, well done. I think that's the, the power of something like that. And the other really great example that I mentioned in the letter is St. Albans City. And if you haven't, haven't been up there, talk to somebody about what has sort of taken place in St. Albans City in the last 20 years. It's just. A city like St. Albans starting 20, 25 years ago could have gone either way. Really could have, and it's gone in a really, really positive place because they've been so good about investing back in that place. So that's what the letters about. We hope the select board moves forward with that as part of the package. There was some wariness about it when it was first brought up. Because you're spending money so the development will happen. And that's, that's tough for a lot of folks to, to take on. Why, why should we build the street just so some developer can build a building on it, make a bunch of money? And the argument is well, it's, it can be a little more synergistic than that. And something's probably going to happen anyway. This is a way to have it happen to plan. Thank you.
Chap and go on.
I, I would like to add that thanks to Matt and staff for educating the select board about this. I know you had CCRPC come in and explain about TIF districts and so forth. And we may have to take a similar approach with anything about heating source.
It feels like a big deal.
Could be. I don't know that any decisions will be made by the board tonight. Eric sort of thought maybe, but then when I talked to him today. He thought this conversation might continue to a future meeting. The, the town is under. Some real and perceived deadlines to make commitments to spend the remaining ARPA money that it has. There are some concerns floating out there that if there's a change in the administration in DC, there could actually be a clawback of unspent ARPA funds. So.
Well, don't they have to be obligated by the end of this year?
Yeah. If they're like not obligated by November. Something could change. We'll see.
What's the, what's the timeline for doing the TIF study? And when would we get, you know, if you're thinking like. We get the funds, they do this analysis about TIF, and then when would we get the results? Like how far? Is that two years, one year?
Six to eight months from when we get started, according to the consultant we talked to. Yeah.
But I guess technically the deadline would be the end 2026, right?
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta spend it. So. But yeah, it's, it's a fairly, there's, this is actually a phase, a phase one study, which is sort of the, the feasibility. And then there's, there's a phase two that's more like. What exactly are the projects that are ready to go that you would, that you would start to incur debt on? And, and what's the development that's ready to come in and be on those projects?
Do we want to have any thoughts on the comprehensive plan?
So I put no work session on the agenda.
We got homework.
Um, so you know, my. Staff and I are, are committing to a really aggressive schedule over the summer to try to get this stuff done. We really are looking for each of the four teams to bring a, you know, completely written, if not ready to, you know, publish. Chapter to each meeting starting in May 21st and through the end of July. So that, you know, each group's got five or six sections to work on, chapters to work on. As a staff, we'll be juggling around the sequence on, on which ones to take up and take over the goal line for you. We, we met Monday and noted some immediate overlaps that we think we can, we can lighten that workload with. A little bit and you know, to the, to the planning commission members on these various teams working on these drafts, don't worry too much. It's really, sorry Emily, going to fall to the staff to, to bang out drafts and get them in front of you and, and, and get input and head nods. But we're going to, we're going to really kind of go for it in terms of getting working drafts up for all of these various sections by the end of the summer. And that really means zooming in on one, once every two weeks and. Somebody in the room on the staff said, well, I, I need a deadline. That's good. And I'm going to, just going to use that. And I, and I know for myself, I do too. So that's where we're headed.
Well, I picked a good partner. Dr. Stevens sent me a draft that has pictures and charts and sources. So it's incredible. I haven't read it yet, but I plan to. Thank you. Okay. I think that's the end of the meeting. Yeah. Unless there's others, other thoughts? A motion to adjourn? Mickey, second?
Second.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. You all are wonderful.